Council Bluff Savings Bank, our goal is to help you, your families and your businesses grow and prosper for generations. We take pride in our community, whether it's volunteering our time or helping individuals, families and businesses succeed. We provide you with the personal service and attention you deserve. With over 220 years of banking experience, decisions are made locally. We are Council Bluff's people operating at Council Bluff's bank to help Council Bluff be a better place to work and live. Council Bluff Savings Bank, hometown banking, the way it used to be. Member FDIC.
All right, welcome everybody, please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. May you be with us, for which stands our nation, our government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order and would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve A, B, C, D, E, G. Second?
And the motions to approve all the items on the consent agenda with the exception of 3F. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Can I have a motion for 3F, please?
Motion to approve 3F. Second?
Any discussion?
I'll be abstaining on this because the person for the appointment is a family member.
Roll call vote.
Brandon again?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Ringenberg?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
White?
Abstain.
All right, public hearings, this is time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 14-240, authorizing the vacation of the East-West Alley in Block 30 and part of the East-West Alley in Block 31, all in Bear Subdivision. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests to this matter? Anyone in the audience who would like to speak against, the meeting minutes will be recorded on tape. It'll be necessary, if you wish to speak, to come forward to the podium and give your name and address for the record. Seeing none, anyone who would like to speak in favor? Is... There a motion from the council?
Motion to approve?
Second?
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. This is time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 14-241, authorizing the vacation of the East-West Alley in Block 16, Grimes Edition. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests to this matter? Anyone who would wish to speak against? Is there anyone here who would wish to speak in favor? What's the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve?
Second?
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. This time, excuse me, this is time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 14-242, which is to vacate and dispose of the North-South Alleys in Blocks 37, 47, and 48, Railroad Edition along the South 20th Street right away between 25th Avenue and 26th Avenue, and 25th Avenue between South 20th Street and South 19th Street. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests to this matter? Anyone wishing to speak against? Are there, is there anyone here who would wish to speak in favor of the resolution? Seeing none, does the council have...
Motion to approve?
Second?
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. This is time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 14-243, authorizing the mayor to execute a quitclaim deed in any documents necessary to transfer the interests of the city property as set forth therein. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests to this matter? Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this matter? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of the council?
Motion to approve?
Second?
Discussion.
If I could for clarification, describe exactly what's going to be approved. It'll be for a city deed for the parcel generally described as 108 Harrison. The consideration for the deed will be buyer's transfer of a lot in the 800 block of First Avenue. Additional considerations shall be that the buyer shall agree to transfer a portion of this parcel, approximately 14 foot wide, to the owners of 24 Canesville Avenue, and the consideration shall be as established in the May 7, 2014 letter from the city attorney's office. Additional consideration shall be that the buyer shall construct a hard surface driveway, which complies with city specifications to provide access to within 25 feet of the westerly boundary of the subject parcel within 12 months of the closing on this parcel. And it is to be located on the easement that is established in the May 7 letter. Additional consideration will be for the buyer to grant to the city the option to buy a 14-foot strip of ground adjacent to 201 First Street and an easement to Harrison Street. The term of the option would be for 10 years, and the option would be assignable by the city to the owner of 201 First Street. The consideration for the, shall be set forth in the May 7 letter, plus 50% of the cost incurred by buyer in constructing the hard surface driveway, plus the cost of relocating any structure legally constructed on the subject parcel by the buyer if the option is not exercised by December 31, 2014.
Mr. White has a lot of words, and I, at the risk of repeating myself again, I want to commend you for working so, so hard on this, trying to do the right thing by, by all concerns. So, speaks, speaks well of you and your office.
It does, and just, just from my clarification, was, was the, the option is through 2024?
Yes, it'll be, well, it'll be, from the date of closing, it'll be 10 years.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. This is time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Ordinance 6213, amending the zoning map as adopted by reference in Section 15.02.040, by rezoning the property located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Gifford Road and 45th Avenue. Immediately west of the Council Bluff Recycling Center from A2 Parks Estates and Agriculture to I2 General Industrial as defined in Chapter 15.21. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests to this matter? Anyone who would wish to speak against? And please give your name and address for the record.
I'm Charles Botel. I have the property just adjacent to this property here that they want to put in. And I've owned the property since 1981. And I got a couple pictures I'd like to show you. It may not have a lot to do with it, but this, this is just one thing I put up with.
Motion to receive and file?
Second?
That's my home, and on the back of it, you'll see what I have to put up with every year. And I don't think having this, this piece...
Chuck, let me do the motion to receive and file. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Okay, sorry to interrupt you.
And I don't, I don't... See that the, having this, this... gravel pit or this cement place is going to do me any good for, uh... Because I put up with all that every year. And I'm just, I'm just opposed to the... To the idea of even having it there. And that idea of them saying that they're going to leave that other portion all green, I, I don't believe that either, because that's going to, they're going to come right up to my fence line. And then later on down the line, they're going to say, oh, I need that, I need that other spot that we own. I need that for more trucks, or more gravel, or more whatever. Well, that's what I have to contend with every year, and the state don't do nothing either. And having something else, I just don't need another thorn in the side. You can see the way I keep it. But they raise my taxes every year. I've been on the state every year for them to, I used to mow that myself down there and pick up all the garbage. But it got to the point now that I don't do that, and I got to call the state over here to beg them to come over to do that, and they say they only do five foot. Well, last year, we didn't have too much rain, and they came down and they cut all that down there, and they said, well, we're going to be cutting this all the time now, beautification. Well, they didn't do that. But I had to call them about three weeks ago to come down, to have them cut that grass. They came down and just cut, just in front of my place. And that water that you see is another one. Just a recent picture of it. Of what happened, this, this last rain. If we have a good rain, I can, I run a boat right up that waterline. That's why I'm going to be opposed to this plant going in.
Any questions for Mr. Botel?
So, so when you say that this is what you have to put up with, that you're referring, of course...
We have a rain.
To the drainage.
Yeah, it don't drain.
Okay.
Hey, the state came in and put a culvert right underneath my driveway, and it reaches my driveway, and that's it.
Okay.
It don't go, it goes up towards the church.
If, if this particular project goes forward and this cement plant is, is built, how is that going to negatively impact the drainage in that area, do you think?
It don't, it don't do nothing to the drainage, I was just showing you what I got to put up with every year. Whenever, have a good rain. And having this, this plant come in, using all that Portland and all that, they're saying there's not going to be no dust, there's not going to be no gravel, there not going to be no stuff that's going to be over onto my property. That I, I don't believe.
Well, there, there are two things about that, sir, that, that might help put your mind at ease. The first is, we, we've made application to try to get sufficient funds from the state to upgrade the road itself, because it, it does need it, for sure. Especially with anything new coming onto it. And then the other thing is, is there are other businesses looking to locate in that area, including one that manufactures some fairly sophisticated, you know, electrical equipment that can't have dust in it, and they've looked at it, and they've, they're assured, they've given, they've told us that they see the plans of this plant, and the plant's going to keep the dust contained. And so, if, if, if people making electrical switches and receptacles and things like that, they know a lot about keeping dust out of things. If, if, if it's good enough for them and their engineers and their plant folks, that's a pretty good sign to me that they're, they're going to keep it down, and the plans are good.
How close is it to some residential houses?
Which, sir, sorry?
Your electrical places. I bet there isn't even a house next to it.
Well, it's all in that same general area, I'm sorry, sir, off the top of my head, I, I'm not, I don't know the distance. But I, I do know in that area is, with the recycling plant and a lot of other things being built there, especially right next to the recycling plant, it is, is very industrial. I, I don't think anyone's going to be building houses right there. So, if folks are coming in and wanting to do more of what's already there, it's tough for us to say no to those jobs.
No, but I'm, I'm a residential area there since 1981.
I hear you. But I, but I, but I think the road concern is going to get taken care of, hopefully.
It won't, it, since 1981, it hasn't.
Well...
I got pictures to prove it, and dates to prove it, every year that it rains, it's ridiculous.
Well, it's on our radar now, that's all I can tell you.
Yeah, another 20 years.
Oh, I don't think so.
I'll be dead by then, and you can have it. But that's why I'm, I'm opposed to this whole rigmarole. You can't tell me that a concrete plant is not going to, to have dust and debris, and all them trucks going down there. And that's going to be bad for the church too, with all them trucks and them, uh, people getting out of the church. And I know they have baseball games right there, right next, right in back of the church. They can't find a better place to put this thing? Or they haven't even tried to. I know last, last time I came to the meeting, everybody was in agreement to have it there. But it's just too darned close to my house. I just put up a $50,000 building there about three years ago. But every year, they raise my taxes, and raise my taxes. And you see what, what it does in the front of the house, really looks nice. If I wanted to sell it, I couldn't sell that for beans. It's an eyesore. People see that big plant back there, and all that noise, and all that gravel, and all that dust. I wouldn't say how much dust, I'm just saying, when you have a Portland cement plant, there's going to be dust.
Any other questions for Mr. Botel? Thank you, sir. Anybody else wishing to speak against?
Hold my pictures up.
Pictures? Oh, did you want those back?
Uh, I'll have to make copies of them and get, and send you the originals. Mm-hmm, or you could pick them up. Okay, I'll have them tomorrow morning for you.
You made this recently?
I don't think so.
We had more rain, didn't it, and White reached that area yet?
It's up to council if they want to...
I think we're good, thank you.
I, I think the other one covers that one, sir.
I'm Michael Galloway, and I live at 320 Bel Air Drive, Council Bluff. And I am the pastor at Twin Cities Christian Church. I stood before you at the last meeting and voiced my objection to the rezoning of that area. And I want to thank Councilman Ringenberg for, Ringenberg for calling and talking with me this past week, and trying to explain to me some of the things that, some of the concerns, talk to some of the concerns that, that we have at, there at the church. We too are concerned about the dust and the dirt, and, and the gravel, and everything that will be stored on, on that site. Is our understanding that the plant is supposed to be a contained plant, where all the dust, everything is supposed to be contained. However, uh... Containment always is a loose term, especially when it comes to dust and dirt. And I'm sure that there, there will be issues about that later on, but we, we express our concern about that with health issues with children and adults who have respiratory problems and things like that. But also, probably even a greater concern is the traffic of the cement trucks in and out of there, even with the addition of the road. That proposed street, that is to be between the concrete plant and our property, runs right along the edge of our property. And the interest of the plant is off of that street, my understanding is correct about the plans. And we're just concerned about the amount of truck traffic going in and out of the plant, especially with children, with children and young people around there. Quite often, we are, we have, are expanding our staff to include a youth minister, and are hoping to expand our youth program. And that is going to make the, his job, and also his, you know, I'm sure it's going to increase his concern for safety for the children too, as those trucks go in and out. Whether they will, whether this plant will run 24/7, or even just seven days a week during normal business hours, will probably depend upon the amount of construction going on in Council Bluff. I realize that part of this with the continued expansion of the interstate system through Council Bluff, I'm sure that some of that traffic will, will, some of those trucks will provide concrete to that as, after the plant is built and, and the project continues. But we're just concerned about the, the increased amount of truck traffic in through there. And we already have, you know, the trucks to the recycle center that go in and out of there, plus other trucks that do go down Gifford Road, some to bring supplies to the new water plant that's down there, and other things. So, we're just, you know, our concern is about the safety of our children and our people. And with the increased amount of truck traffic, and also the, the health concerns with the, uh... I mean, even if the process of making the concrete is contained within the building, even just the dirt, increased dirt and dust, trucks going in and out. So, we're just, we just wanted to voice our concerns, and also to voice our objection to the rezoning of that area.
Any questions from Reverend Galloway?
Might just add that since we talked, wanted to offer you another data point, and that was eco-electrical supply, if you want us to relocate down that area. They, they were asked about if they had any concerns about that dust, because generally, dust and electrical parts don't mix very well.
Right.
And, and they, they apparently were satisfied enough with the, with the plans for the, for the plant that they came back and said that, for, for purposes of their business, that they were not concerned about that. So, I just thought that was kind of a significant data point.
Where would they be going?
I'm sorry?
How close are they going to be?
Echo would be... Right across the road.
Right across the road, right, just to the, north of the recycle center.
Yeah, so actually, as, as the wind blows, they would be at, at greater risk than, than just about anybody.
Just to, in this on a more positive note, we do appreciate the idea that they're going to be redoing Gifford Road, because it sometimes gets rather busy with all the traffic to the recycle center, the way it is now. And also, there is a drainage problem on the east side of Gifford Road. We did, we tend to have a pond over there after the rains too. Hopefully that, that will take care of that. But we just wanted to, again, to speak our objection to the, to the rezoning of this piece of land from, from the church.
Thank you very much.
They got anything passed for 45th Street? They're going to leave that all?
Chuck, I don't know. Off the top of my head, I'm not even sure exactly where 45th is.
Is that all the water back there?
Oh, it's back behind.
To, to that south border.
Anybody else wishing to speak against? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Betty Frazier. I live at 804 First Avenue, and I attend Twin Cities Christian Church. And I mostly want to echo what Pastor Mike had, had said, the, the safety environment with the dust. And I know you say it's contained and stuff, but I have seen dust come into closed windows when traffic goes by and things like that too. So... Dust has a way. But, um, and with the electric plant, that would be all enclosed, and they may build that into it. Where I think our concern around the church is the outdoor environment also. And again, the safety with the trucks and the children, and people leaving the church and so forth. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak against? Anyone here who would like to speak in favor?
Hello, my name is Bob Daly. I'm at 1601 Dodd Street in Omaha. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Gear Land. Gear will own the real estate and affiliated company, same ownership, Consolidated is the actual operator. I'm sure you've seen a lot of consolidated trucks around. The land's currently under contract, and the plan is, we would, you know, if we did get approved for rezoning, we'd try to close as soon as possible. Though it's about a, a 12-acre site, the plan really is only to use about half of it. The whole thing would be rezoned, because that's the way the application was made. But we would really only be, yeah.
Do we need to receive a file? Motion to receive a file?
Second?
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Can you flip it around so they can see on the TV maybe? Yes, so they can put it on the camera. There you go.
So, the plant is only used about half of that, and that's the piece that's on Gifford Road. Then there's, you know, it's kind of shaped like an L, and the other side of the L, which is on the north side, which is the land that's actually next to the church, there'd be no plan to use that for now. We really don't know what's going to happen with that land, we'd rather not even buy it, but it's a, it's a package deal, it'd probably be sold off in the future. So, all of the vehicles would enter onto and from Gifford Road. Everything would go towards 24th Street and Veterans. There's no need to go any further south in this property, so you wouldn't be heading down those residential areas. And then you'll see 45th Avenue is on the south side of the property, and we wouldn't be using that at all, there's no need for that. Last time I was here, we mentioned that this is just an ideal spot for a concrete plant, because it's great access in Veterans, 24th, by the interstate. You know, it's got the great access, it's in an industrial area that, that looks like it's becoming more industrial, it just seems natural for that. It's located across the street from the recycling plant, which is great, because, you know, those are good neighbors, so to speak, that kind of gets rid of the NIMBY problem. And then what we also, we like about it is, we don't drive by any residences. And I, and I recognize we're going by the church, but we don't go by any residences, we would have no reason even to go near them, so that's what makes it a really good site. That's about all I've got to say, if, if you've got any further questions, I'd be happy to answer. I'm also here with Aaron Luth from Consolidated, and Dean Fagen from HGM is the engineer, and they're probably better at describing any sort of plans and operations. But if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer.
On, on your, on your map here, where, point me to the direction where the church and then the residence property is.
Are you looking at this one?
I don't know what I'm looking at.
Yeah, this is the last planet.
The last page.
This is the church, or this is the property right here that Consolidated Concrete wants to develop. The church is located right here.
Okay.
And here's the new Gifford Street, being the rise campus, like, or...
Okay, so the church is here, and then the, the resident property is...
There's one here.
Is here, okay.
These are the two gentlemen that just go.
Okay.
And there's the residential one here.
Okay, so it looks to me, if I'm following these plans correctly, that there is a pretty good tree buffer on, yes.
On the west side.
And also there. And then are you going to have a bu- buffer to protect the church?
Yes, we will try and buffer trees along there to, to...
Okay, 'cause I, all right.
Along that same line, just to complete the concerns about kids and safety and whatnot. I would imagine, since it's a business, you're going to plan for perimeter fencing as well. So, there's, that, that buffer plus the perimeter fencing.
The buffer of trees are only, they're, in the spring, they're in the summer, and as soon as they lease, come off, you're there, and you see that plant. And that plant, them trees are only like, maybe 50 foot deep from my property over that, over that fence line.
Chuck, you, we only do 10 minutes, and so you've had your 10 minutes, so thank you.
How many jobs are anticipated at this facility?
Why don't I have Eric come up and talk about that?
Please.
Hello, my name's Aaron Luth, I'm with Consolidated Concrete. The address is 9555 South 147th Street. And as far as we can figure right now, at the best-case scenario, in the next few years, we'd like to have a total of 25 truck drivers, and another five additional employees, being management, maintenance, and, you know, cleaning. But a total of 30 jobs is kind of what we're anticipating at this point. We're looking at a total investment of around between five and eight million. And we are existing, we have some, some information that we submitted for the rise funding, I don't know if you guys received that or not. But we do have two existing locations in Omaha, which we have employees based at those locations too. So, we will have employees based in Council Bluff, but then we'll also have trucks running back and forth from both sides of the river. I did want to point out that I, I know that water runoff and dust are of a, a big concern. We do have... We do have, these are pictures of our existing location. And just want to point out that we do, our, our batching process is, as we submitted in the documents, it's, it's about 100% enclosed. The one that we're planning to build in Council Bluffs is actually going to be more, more enclosed than these existing facilities in Omaha, where the silos will actually be inside the building too. So it'll be more of a, I think you can see it on the handout that you've got, and it looks like A2.1 shows the building elevation. We also have on the bottom left corner, there is our retention basin of where we handle all of the runoff water for our existing properties. We will have a very similar setup on this property, where we'll have almost a moat around the existing exterior of where we're going to be operating, and then it will run into a retention pond similar to that.
And all hard surface?
Yeah, we will, we do plan to do, you know, on the drive lanes, definitely, where the trucks will be driving, it will be hard surface. As far as one of the concerns that the church had, you know, obviously we, we want to be good neighbors with everybody. We definitely don't want to see anybody get hurt. It is very rare that we ever work on Sundays, being that, you know, in highway construction and especially some of the work that's going to be coming in Council Bluffs, there is some Sunday work. It's usually night work. Very rarely have we ever been working during church hours. But we do work at night sometimes, and sometimes we do work on Sundays. It's usually for a, you know, interstate bridge deck pour or something like that where traffic has to be shut down.
So your, your location in Omaha, are you, are there neighbors? What's, what's the setup over there?
In Omaha, or if you're familiar with the area, we're right just to the north of Satbro's Truck Stop. And we have a, a kind of a concrete crushing facility across the street from us, similar to what the recycling center is. And then we have a, a hotel and a car dealership on the east side of us.
Any other questions? And Chuck, there's three readings, and so two weeks from now, we'll have a third reading. If, if you hear something you had questions about, you get five minutes, and then next meeting you can ask questions then, or, or come see the council afterwards. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion from the council? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Oh, I have to have a motion first.
Nope.
I, I would like to make a motion to con, to concur with the city planning recommendation.
Second.
Discussion.
You know, I think this area really is, is very industrial, and I know it is going to have some impact on, on those that are there. I think with the church, it's my understanding, they will be putting some trees in to buffer, and hopefully there's not going to be any dust anyway. And I think, I really think that they've got safe drivers. I don't think that I've ever heard of an incident where there's been a problem. I'm not aware of it. I think they'll be good neighbors, and I, and I believe too, that if you are having a problem with truck drivers driving too fast or, or being dangerous, I, I feel very confident that it would take nothing more than a phone call to get that calmed down. I think it is an ideal location, and I think we can expect to see the rest of this area over time become very industrial. So that's why I'm, I'm going to be in favor of this.
I, I really do appreciate the concerns, and it, 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 it's seldom easy up here, because you, you've got to try to balance, you know, different people's wishes and property. And in this instance, you know, something's got to happen with that ground. We, I, I think everyone would agree that just leaving it bare and not doing anything with it, what good does that do? It, it doesn't create jobs. Homes aren't going to be built across from the recycling center. That's the way the area is going, and to, to try to tell this, this property owner that, that they can't build something that's right across the street and is desperately needed in that area and will create jobs, and they're putting up as many mitigating factors, even more actually than they're required to. I can't say no to that. But I appreciate the concerns, and it's, you know, in that sense, it's, it's, it's not an easy call.
Well, I, I would also like to thank the people who came to speak on, on both sides of this, of this rezoning. We're always looking for ways to expand the city's tax base so that we can pay for the services that our taxpayers need. And this is, this is a perfect opportunity to, to achieve that goal for us. And I, I believe as Councilman White has detailed, that they will be a good neighbor. I hope they will be a new, a good neighbor, and it, and it seems that they will. Hopefully the trees, when they go in, will be good sized trees for an immediate visual buffer. And it seems that they'll take care of the property, so I, you know, I'm, I'm compelled to, to support this, this development. I do believe that that is indeed the way that this area is going to go. But I think that we can all be good neighbors together and, and make it work.
I certainly remain open to having my ear bent on this, on this matter. But looking over what, what community development has, has proposed in Public Works Project to redo Gifford Road with a view towards better utilizing this, this area for industrial and commercial expansion, think makes a lot of sense on, on different levels. And I, I would note that in an effort to mitigate some of the concerns of the, of the church, that with the redesign of, of Gifford Road, that, that actually takes traffic further away from, from the church buildings themselves. So, so you may actually benefit in that, in that regard. And I certainly hope that as this area is developed for, for industrial purposes, that that's going to improve the drainage of, of this area too. Because otherwise, this, this area is not going to be practical for, for development for, for any purpose. So I'm, so I, I join my colleagues in saying that, that I think development really in the long term benefits all on, and so I'm going to support this resolution.
All right. Any further discussion? We have a motion completed discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. This is the time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of ordinance 6214. Amending the zoning map is adopted by reference in section 15.020.04, I'm sorry, 15.02.040 by rezoning the south half of the vacated Franklin Avenue right of a budding Lot 7 Valley View Place from R1 single-family residential to C2 general commercial as defined in chapter 15.15. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests to this matter? Anyone wishing to speak against? Is there anyone here who would desire to speak in favor? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. This is the time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of ordinance 6215. Amending the zoning map is adopted by reference in section 15.02.040 by rezoning the property located at 629 Sixth Avenue from R3 low-density multifamily residential to AP administrative professional as defined in chapter 15.13. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests to this matter? Anyone wishing to speak against? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor? Seeing none?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Madam Clerk?
Resolutions, Resolution 14-245, authorizing the mayor to execute an offer to buy property located at 29 South 35th Street, 3424 Second Avenue, 3426 Second Avenue, 117 South 35th Street, 3440 Second Avenue, and 3036 Second Avenue.
Motion to approve the resolution as per today's executive session.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Applications, permits, and cancellations, 6A and B.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Any requests from citizens to be heard?
None received.
Is anyone here who would like to address the council? Can you give your name and, and address for the record, Connor?
Connor Ryan, 167 South Linden. My issue's a little bit less serious than what you're dealing with here, but it concerns the, the city parks. Try to make it long, short, and short. I've, I've talked to John Bott, I've talked to Sarah several times. It's a real simple deal. Basketball nets, it's not that big a deal. Just got back from Chicago, rode the L train all the way through south side of Chicago. Probably one of the toughest, dirtiest neighborhoods in the nation. They've got basketball nets on their hoop, and there's people out there, out there actually utilizing them. You can't utilize these parks when they're being neglected the way they are. The tennis nets are sagging, and there's no nets on the basketball hoops. You know, I, I can't understand why the taxpayers are providing a lot of these parks for employees with housing and vehicles, you know, but taxpayers aren't getting anything back. It's a simple $2 deal with basketball nets. You know, I've gone over, I've, I've talked to Sarah three times. She goes, I'll send out emails, and I know what's happening with those emails. You know, I've worked as a temp for the Parks Department. I know what happens when people call and complain. You know, it's aesthetically, you'd be amazed what just having those nets in the parks would do. You know, to have these rims bent, you know, have the basketball nets and the tennis courts available for someone to play, it's probably going to decrease the vandalism and the graffiti by a ton. I can't understand why they just refuse to put the nets up or to raise the tennis nets so they're playable. All those tennis courts, basketball courts have been neglected for so many years. There's weeds growing out of them. The only thing you can utilize in these parks right now are the actually, actual picnic tables, you know? Thank God for Steve Dunn, Parks employee, and his crew of temporary people that do a great job mowing, you know? But, you know, it, it's, it's basketball nets. I'm not asking, you know, for an indoor flag football stadium or a water park, you know? It's basketball nets, it's not that big a deal. I can't understand why they refuse to do it.
Sir, have you, I, I'd be glad to put you in touch with, your, your neighborhood association's actually pretty active on that area, and has been doing a lot of things as a neighborhood, working with the city to clean up the park area. You know, there, there's some various initiatives. I'm not aware of basketball hoops in this current one, but I'd encourage you to become a part of that discussion, because I, I think something positive's coming out of it, where the residents are working with the city. And I'd, I'd be glad to hook you up with that.
I'm, I'm in touch with all of them.
Oh, okay.
And I'm not necessarily, I'm not necessarily just talking about the Linden Park area. I'm talking about Playland, Trolley Park. None of them have nets. And you drive by these parks and you see these kids, they're out there dribbling basketball. You can't shoot the ball through the net, you know, they get bored. They go meet at the park, you know? Next thing, they got a can of spray paint, you know? Years ago, there used to be outdoor leagues, you know, rec leagues. Man, I can remember in rec league where you and the former mayor even took it outside down at the armory one time.
Didn't go well for me that night.
Anyway, that, that's all I had. I don't think it's that big a deal. You know, if, if it's, if it's a budget issue, you know, I'm sure I can come up with the money, you know, to buy 10 basketball nets. But I'm not too keen on installing them, you know?
I'll pass it on.
That, that's all I had, guys.
Thanks for taking the time to come down and letting us know, because I did not realize. You know, I, I, I don't pay attention to the actual, you know, I look at the kids' equipment, but not the basketball hoops. Had you not come down here tonight, I would have had no idea.
I mean, you'd be amazed aesthetically, just having them there. And for the few years that I worked as a temp for the Parks Department, I'll bet you five times a week, I was asked by a mother or father, how come you don't put up nets? Uh, well, they get stolen, you know? I'd tell them, oh, they keep getting stolen. And I'm like, no, they don't. They haven't had any up for years, you know? So I could just be amazed at the use that those parks would finally get, you know, if.
I agree.
They're reusable.
I didn't realize.
Though vandalism has been a problem, but I'll, I'll grant you, particularly with soccer nets, which are very expensive.
Right, sure.
But yeah, that, that sort of thing is needed, and, and thank you for bringing it to our attention.
I see. You'd see a huge improvement on a very little investment, and that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Thank you.
Mayor, will you kind of maybe report back to us and let us know? There may be a reason that we don't know why they don't, whether it's a...
We had no idea. I had no idea it was a...
There, there are various programs with money burning holes in pockets.
I think historically, the nylon nets don't last, the, the weather and the combination. But it used to be they put up the chain link.
Chain, that's what I was thinking, the chain ones.
We'll see what, we'll pass it on and see what.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Anyone from the council? All right. Thank you very much. We're adjourned for tonight.
Yeah, that's one I remember, is the chain one.
At Council Bluff Savings Bank, we take pride in our community in volunteering our time to helping individuals, families, and businesses succeed. We are Council Bluffs people, operating at Council Bluffs Bank to help Council Bluffs be a better place to work and live. Hometown banking the way it used to be.